The Carney Board of Alderman Meeting, it is six thirty P M. I'll call the meeting order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, have you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everybody is present but Alderman Spencer, and you do have a quorum.
All right, next item under the agenda this evening is public hearings. We have no public hearings noticed up this evening. We have no personal appearances on the agenda this evening. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion on the consent agenda from the board? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move on to ordinances. The first ordinance on the agenda this evening is a motion approving bill number twelve, twenty twenty four, presented by Sheila Ernst and our city administrator. An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri rescinding ordinance number fifteen fifty-two, twenty twenty four, approving a cooperative agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri and Boone County, Missouri, by and through the Boone County Sheriff's Office for K nine basic training services. Sheila, you have the floor.
This ordinance rescends an ordinance that was passed earlier in the year. We will pass and approve later in the year another contract. The officer that was going to go to training was unable to attend, and so we never did actually submit this to Boone County, so we are not actually canceling anything, but we do need to rescind the ordinance. So this is just housekeeping.
Would that be by a simple motion or do you need a reading? Simple motion?
We need a, we need a ordinance to rescind the ordinance, yes.
If you can, if there's not any questions from the board, if you can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri rescinding ordinance number fifteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty four, approving a cooperative agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri and Boone County, Missouri, by and through the Boone County Sheriff's Office for K nine basic training services.
I'll approve on the first read.
Second. All right, ma'am, first and second. Sheila, take some reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri rescinding ordinance number fifteen fifty-two dash twenty twenty four, approving a cooperative agreement between the City of Carney, Missouri and Boone County, Missouri, by and through the Boone County Sheriff's Office for K nine basic training services.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Pull the board.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance is rescinded. Is that somebody online? Okay. Okay. Next item is a motion approving bill number thirteen, twenty twenty four, presented by Sheila Ernst and the city administrator, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a park reservation agreement between the Carney R one school district, a political subdivision in the City of Carney, Missouri, to host a five K employee fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Mayor and board, this reservation was approved by the park board at their last meeting, and this is an annual event that the school district has hosted several of the last few years, and there are no issues with it.
Anything from our park liaison?
No, this was talked about. It is something that they do on a regular basis, and it's something we'd like to keep going for, you know, a good relationship between the city and school.
There's no questions from the board. If we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a park reservation agreement between Carney R one school district, a political subdivision, and the City of Carney, Missouri, to host a five K employee fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Will Jesse James on the first reading? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a park reservation agreement between Carney R one school district, a political subdivision, and the City of Carney, Missouri, to host a five K employee fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Make a motion. Could pass on the second read?
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, ordinance passes on the second reading. The next item is a motion approving bill number fourteen, twenty twenty four, presented by David Pavlich, our community development director, an ordinance amending chapter two oh five animal regulations, sections two oh five, zero one, zero through two, zero five, one nine, zero. You have the floor?
Well, at a previous meeting, the board asked staff to prepare an amendment to our dangerous animals section of the code, and so we prepared amendments for you tonight. If you'd like me to go into detail, I can go into detail, but I think this was going to be moved to the next meeting so that Jerry Spencer can be present.
If that's a desire of the board, if somebody wants to make a motion to move it to the next meeting, I do want to make the statement that even though Alderman Spencer's absence was communicated to us in advance for a vacation, it's my opinion that business has to move forward. We have a quorum here this evening. Just because one board member is gone does not mean, in my eyes, that we need to halt any business. But that being said, if somebody on the board would like to make a motion to table this reading in consideration of future meeting, then that's.
I'd like to make a motion to table till next meeting.
We got a first on the table. Do we have a second? Seeing nothing, that motion dies on the table. Any other discussion on this item this evening by the board?
I would like to ask a couple of questions of staff. One of the things, as I read through here, was I didn't see, maybe I'm just not understanding how this works, but it seems like once you have a dog, there's no, there's no consequence for the owner. I mean, it's like if you have a dog attack a person, regardless of breed, there's no, there's no, like fines or things like that. Those don't happen until later in the process.
Yeah, there would be a ticket written, and so they would go before the judge for an ordinance, yeah, general ordinance, so anytime there would be a ticket that's issued.
Okay. I guess, so then, once the, once the animal is labeled dangerous, that's when all this other stuff kicks in, with they would be required to have the dog chip, they would have to have insurance, that would, like, all of that would happen.
If on appeal, they go before the judge, and the judge finds that it is a dangerous animal but not, is not euthanized, then those other requirements kick in. So microchipping, there's sterilization, confinement, so pretty heavy confinement rules would apply. Part of, part of the thought there, too, is there's a dangerous animal in our community. Maybe it shouldn't be sent to some other community and be a problem there, too.
Sure. And then, then the penalties of the five hundred dollars in fines or ninety days imprisonment, that has to do, that's section one sixty. Those only kick in when the, the owner doesn't comply with. Is that, that's where, I guess I'm confused there, is when do those penalties kick in?
Yeah, that's not something that we change, so I think that would apply, that could potentially apply to any, any violation.
Okay.
So, David, I noticed some language in there that I hadn't seen before, called a Dunbar scale. Where'd that come from?
We modeled this part of that ordinance from the City of Liberty, and so Dunbar scale is a scale that can be used to judge, I guess, the strength of a bite or the damage created by a bite. So if a dog bites, it may not draw blood, may not be qualified as a dangerous animal. A bigger dog, that might draw blood, break a bone, or something, or even worse, could fall into that dangerous category.
So this is more of a tool for the judge to, to be able to?
And staff.
Well, yeah. So we also did a survey or a poll, and there were three or four big items that the citizens wanted added. Is that, is that part of the, what section is here? One fifty-five, section C?
In the, in the poll, the one I remember was the top fifty-seven percent support stronger leash laws. So if you look under the definition of restraint, it would be towards the beginning. Actually, on the very front page, well, front page of the ordinance, we have, in the, we have hold it for additions. So you'll see the definition restraint, there's a lot of strike through, that's our existing ordinance, which will allow immediate and effective control to include persons that see and, to dog verbally, to remove that. So you, let's say if you're out in public, have your dog on a leash or in an enclosure. So an enclosure would be either inside a house, inside of a fenced yard, inside of an electric fence.
And there's also.
Alderman Lehman, if you note page fifty, that will kind of also spell out a lot of the changes of the, page fifteen agenda. If you look at the proposed changes to chapter two oh five animal regulations, that'll really give you a good, all the strike through and the new language added to the ordinance. If there's no other questions from board members, has, has our animal control officer had a chance to review the proposed ordinance, and does she have any feedback that you're aware of?
She was included in these proposed changes. We worked on that together. She's aware. I think she supports.
Okay.
The changes that are.
So we got a set number, how many dogs a person can have here?
That's not been changed.
Ordinance says three, correct?
We also sent, let the judge review the ordinance prior to it being presented to you, and he had no comments.
I assume that, I would assume that residents would have other recourse other than this. This is the city's response, but they would have, if there was a dog attack, that there would be other recourse.
Yes.
That they could have, okay.
They would just be a personal matter, but would not go before the city.
And everything in this is only after the fact? Yes.
I would disagree, I would disagree with that. We talk about proper restraints and other owner responsibilities.
And this, this is not the Pipple ban. This is just a strengthening our inter-stud ordinance, correct?
That's my, I thought that that's what we were going to talk about at a future meeting.
I believe that was.
Yes.
Yeah.
If there are no other questions or items of discussion from the board, if we could read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter two zero five animal regulations, section two zero five point zero one zero through two zero five point one nine zero.
Move to approve on the first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter two zero five animal regulations, sections two zero five point oh one oh through two zero five point one nine zero.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt? Alderman Lehman? Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item under the agenda is resolutions. A motion approving resolution ten, twenty twenty four, presented by Sheila Ernst and city administrator. A resolution establishing a policy to protect the city and taxpayers from and against all lawsuits, actions, costs, claims, demands, and damages of any character arising from a special event that is held on city property. You have the floor?
This proposed resolution would establish a policy to protect the city against any claims that someone might ask the city to pay that occur or arise from any special event that would be held on city property by an outside organization. How it is proposed is that we would follow the sovereign immunity law so that the city would not have any additional liability. However, that amount gets updated annually by the Missouri Department of Insurance. For twenty twenty-four, those amounts are three million, three hundred seventy thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars per occurrence. That would be for all of the people or all of the claims that would arise, let's say that, you know, some, there was a, I don't know what would happen, something horrible would happen, and the city is protected. We would only be having to pay up to three million, three hundred seventy thousand, one hundred thirty-seven dollars in a single occurrence, and no more than five hundred, five thousand, five hundred twenty dollars per person from any single occurrence. That is for all political subdivisions, governments in the state of Missouri. And so what our policy would do is ask for us to be held harmless. If we get permission for somebody to hold a public event on city-owned property, they would need to, they might hold us harmless, but if they don't have the money, the funds, especially like in a nonprofit organization, and they don't have enough funds, we would still be liable if we did not require them to have an insurance policy. They just simply, if something horrible happened, the city would end up having to go ahead and, and pay those, the difference in the money that they had. And so you guys can make the decision to set it lower if you so desire. To protect the city and taxpayers, though, from not having to come up with any extra funds, you would want to set it at a sovereign immunity level.
Any questions or items of discussion from the board on this topic?
First one that comes to my mind is the Labor Day races. Did they have insurance?
They did last year.
Did they? I didn't know if they were doing that.
So this essentially sets the amount of insurance that, whether it be the school district or whoever holds an event, they would have to have an insurance policy, in this case of three million, three hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, to eliminate any, any liability or risk to our taxpayers.
Right.
Right now, what are we doing, two million? Is that what it is?
Yeah, I believe last year, the board decreased that, if I remember correctly. I spoke against that. I still speak against that. All those you guys know, it's at the will of the board. I only vote to break ties. I just, the only thing I would like to say to the board is if that's your desire, I want you guys to be reminded that we, last year, we compared ourselves to some neighboring cities that we often compare ourselves to. They don't have the type of events we do. They don't have demolition derbies, they don't have rodeos. So when we're making those decisions, I just want to make sure that we're thinking apples to apples. We do have some more serious community events that we host at Jesse James Park that are, some of the other communities don't. So I think that does open up more opportunities of risk that we need to make sure are mitigated to protect our taxpayers. But with that being said, are there any other items of discussion or?
I agree with that to a point. I mean, with the, the major events, like the demolition derby, if a car gets loose or something, but some of our smaller events, will this kind of wipe out some of those smaller events that we would do downtown if we required this much insurance? That's, that's my only concern, I guess. Because that's going to, it's going to affect some of the downtown stuff. I totally agree with you. With the big stuff up there, I have no problem with that at all. But some of the smaller stuff down here, is this going to make it where maybe an organization wouldn't have?
I think that's, that's a fair consideration, something the board's going to have to, to consider for sure. You know, the last thing, one is an unintended consequence to, you know, the Labor Day races, for example, to not be able to go forward because they can't afford insurance. But what I will say is, you know, sometimes you have to make tough decisions. And I think if, as long as we're putting the city's best interest in the forefront of every decision we make, it's going to work out okay. So I, I don't think, in the past, did, last year, we, before we lowered it, I know that there were some non-for-profits that were concerned about insurance cost. That, that's a possibility. What we got to decide is, you know, what, what's?
Well, I would really hate to, as you know, I'm a big proponent of the Labor Day races. I'd hate to see the Labor Day races or something be squashed over, over something that, you know, that we did hear that, I mean, there's no motorized vehicles involved in, there's no, it's not to the extent that we have with a, you know, like a mud run or something like that. I don't know if there's, is there a way to split some of that up to where maybe it's, instead of just a blanket on there that, maybe on smaller things, we can do something different, that's all.
Maybe we could consider classes of events and, and require different insurance requirements for different events. And I want to make it clear that I don't want the public to think that the Labor Day races are in jeopardy because.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that.
That's an example we're using, but maybe I'm just being too paranoid here, but it is at the, one of the busiest intersections in our community. And if you look at a lot of the terror and crazy events that have happened as of the last couple of years, it's cars driving through crowded areas. And so, look, I, I just, like the rest of the board, I, I take protecting our taxpayers seriously, and it's my recommendation that we continue on with the Missouri insurance sovereignty, sovereign immunity limits.
Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, the Labor Day races are put on by another entity, and the city has no.
Correct, but it is on a pedal street, so they're required to fill out an application to close the street down and provide the proper insurance notification to the city. It's, it's put on by the Optimus Club, and insurance is provided by Optimus International, I believe is who provides that. I, I don't know the insurance cost difference from two million to, to three point two and some change. I'm sure that there, it's probably, I would, it's three point three, or since it increased, I would assume it's probably a couple thousand dollars.
You have to go, you have to go to four because you can't buy, you have to buy an equal.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions or discussions from the board on the topic? Larry, I, I hate to put you on the spot, but can I use the NICE as an example? Do you know the difference of insurance costs for your organization, what that would be?
Well, we'll have, we would have to, right now, we're covered under three million.
Okay. You'd have to go up to four million because you have to buy.
And maybe you'll have to go, I don't remember if it was four or something like that.
I think you'd have to go.
Seven hundred and fifty-eight or a dollar's more cost.
Okay.
Because then we have certain increments you can do against.
Yeah, I think you'd have to go up to four million in coverage to, to meet the requirement. I have nothing further on the topic. If there are any other questions or recommendations from the board, if we can entertain a motion approving resolution ten, twenty twenty-four, a resolution establishing a policy to protect the city and taxpayers from and against all lawsuits, actions, costs, claims, demands, and damages of any character arising from a special event that is held on city property.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess.
Oppose? Motion, uh, resol, motion approving resolution ten, twenty twenty-four has passed unanimously. Items for review and presentation this evening, we have our twenty twenty-three pavement condition index PCI presentation by Mr. Greg Van Patten, Lamprey Neerson. Greg, if you come to the podium, you have the floor.
Thank you. Do you have the?
I'll try to get to the other chairs. Let me try.
You can try your way?
It's one of the most.
It's, okay, it's sixty-eight.
Thanks, David. Evening, Mayor, members of the board. Thanks for having me. My name is Greg Van Patten. I'm with Lamprey Neerson, and we did the pavement condition assessment of Carney streets in twenty twenty-three, and that has led to a proposed maintenance plan that we get to. So Carney has approximately one hundred fourteen point six lane miles of streets, and that's an estimated cost of our evaluation of one hundred and twenty-one million. So it's, the thing about this number is it's likely the most expensive thing you own. Over ninety-eight percent of the streets are asphalt. We recommend maintenance on a street every eight to twelve years on a, on a street segment, depending on the maintenance that you're performing. Our recommendation is one point nine million annually to maintain your streets. And our, that's all to keep your, your good streets good. So we want to keep the streets in fair, better condition. As the, as the condition worsens, the cost to, to bring your streets back dramatically increases. So your anticipated budget breakdown this year is four hundred and ten thousand. With that, there's, I've got a few different options. You can do all of it and tear seal, which would be about seven point three percent of your streets. You can do, and that, and that would include the, that would include cracked ceiling, base repair, and soft class. We would expect your, your PCI to stabilize with that, with that approach. Seven point three percent, that's at the bottom of the twelve percent recommendation. The, you can do four percent with U-BASS, which is a, a, a maintenance technique in the area that I'll, I'll get more into later on. maintenance technique in the area that I'll get more into later on. And we would, so if you're only doing four percent, we would, you're, while you're maintaining that four percent, you got to remember that the rest of the streets are continuing to worsen. So we'd expect your overall network PCI to still continue to decline. And then you can do about three percent with a mill and overlay with that four hundred and ten thousand dollar budget. And again, we'd expect your PCI to continue to decline. I probably didn't say this earlier, but PCI, that's pavement condition index. So this year, what we did was Stantec, that's their vein, you might have seen it out around town. The Road Tester three thousand, it collects distresses in your, in the pavement using laser GPS and crack recognition technology. It categorizes between twenty different asphalt, nineteen different concrete distresses, and it rates them based on the severity. And then that's used to calculate the PCI, giving your, your pavements a rating. So this is that, that PCI, the pavement condition index. This is a scale from zero to a hundred. So a hundred is a street you probably just maintained or was just recently built. Zero is, is the worst case it could be. When your, when your PCI drops to that seventy range, that's when we recommend doing surface treatments, like UBS, mill and overlays. When it's between fifty five and seventy, or that's really the range to do those surface treatments. When you get below fifty five, your base repairs are going to go up. And so the cost to maintain that street goes up. When you fall below forty, it's, you're, you're potentially in the reconstruct category when you, when your PCI falls below forty. So here are some examples of what those ratings look like on Carney Streets. This is at Foxtail Drive. It's in the, the good category, so that was the eighty five to a hundred. It's likely recently been either built or, or had surface treatment. You can't really see much of any cracks. It looks like there's a joint that's going across the street, but otherwise it looks like it's in great condition. Here's Watson Drive. It's in satisfactory conditions, so that would be the seventy to eighty five. You'll notice Watson Drive has been crack sealed, the edges are cracked and the center line is crack sealed. And we do recommend crack seal three to five years after doing a surface treatment. It's the, it's really the best maintenance technique to preserve the life of your streets, sealing up those cracks. So here's that fair category. This is when it's the ideal time to perform the surface treatment between the fifty five, seventy PCI rating. So this is on one hundred and sixty second street. You can see there's more cracks on that street. It hasn't been crack sealed, but crack sealing it would be a good idea. Yeah, it's, so it's, it's at the point where if you let it, you know, as it falls into poor, the costs are going to go up, so this is the time to maintain it. This is Nation Road, it's in poor condition. You can see that looks like it might be a, a little bit of a base failure. And then, let's look at the next one there, dude. So now, here's a base failure on a very poor street. This is Nineteenth Street, it's near Hawthorne Elementary. This, this is a base patch that needs to be done. And then to the next one, yeah, so. We lost the serious, didn't we? Is that up there? So, yeah, in between, you know, somewhere between the very poor that failed is when your street likely needs to be reconstructed. You can see this one has lots of, that's what we call allergene cracking, it's a, it's a sign of a base failure. So this is a representation of what they found for Carney Streets. The PCI is a weighted average of the full street. This inspection took place in June of twenty twenty three. And if you didn't do any maintenance, the PCI is projected to fall by five points in five years. So what we're looking at is you, when, when something falls into what's the yellow category, the fair, that's, that's the ideal time to perform maintenance, bring it back up to good. So the concern is those, the very poor and the serious, those costs go up dramatically to, to maintain those. So we really want to be maintaining, we want to keep your good streets good and maintain the streets that are in fair or even the poor, the orange condition. There'll be more base repairs, but not nearly as much as, as you go down to the other categories. Here's a map of, of the, of the data from that same graph. The initial Stantec pavement inspection to establish pavement condition, I notes for each street. So like I said, the PCI is calculated based on the weighted areas of the pavement. Carney's PCI is fifty eight point nine. So it's right there in the fair category. We would like to see a network average PCI of at least seventy unless streets in the poor or below category. So this kind of shows, this graph here shows the costs that comes with, with maintaining your streets. You can see up at the top, while it's still orange and it's in good condition. They, as it goes back up, that's probably, you know, maybe a crack seal or, or some kind of small maintenance was performed to keep that, that street in good condition. If you do nothing, the graph continues to fall down into the very poor or worse. And like I mentioned, the cost to bring that back up dramatically increases. As you go down the line, as the years go on, eventually you crack seal turns into a bigger form of maintenance, like a mill and overlay or UBS treatment. So our philosophy for a street maintenance plan, when you're developing one, is, is to look at it in a few. Well, first, we want to look at, so what do you have? So that's what we looked at before Stantec went out, was we picked up all the, all of Carney Streets, sent them a GIS file, and then they did the condition assessment. So what kind of condition are your streets in? And then the next step is, so what, what tools can you use or the form of maintenance technique? Crack seal, base repair, UBS, chip seal, mill and overlays, just overlays. And then lastly, how much funding is available? So like I said, Carney's PCI is a fifty eight point nine as of June of twenty twenty three. Without maintenance, we would expect that PCI to continue to drop by five points in five years. As the network PCI drops, it's more expensive to maintain those streets. The objective is to mitigate future cost by performing yearly maintenance, preferably on eight to twelve percent of the city streets. You want to decrease the categories in poor and increase the, the streets that are in fair and satisfactory groups. And that's, that's what I've been saying, to keep your, your good streets good approach. And then we also recommend bringing Stantec back for an inspection in three to five years. The best way to, to get the most out of, out of using Stantec and, and what they provide is to see how your streets have performed. So that, the, the graph, or the, the graph we use for pavement deterioration is a nationwide average. But if we keep bringing Stantec back to, to look at your streets and give us their PCI value, we can, we can tailor that graph to Carney Streets. And, and we can, so we can use the deterioration curve for each of your streets and know how they're performing based on the maintenance that was used and, and traffic that's on them, et cetera. And so, so that, that's why we, we recommend bringing them back every three to five years. And then lastly, the goal is an annual budget of one point nine million for Carney, based on the one hundred and fourteen lane miles that you own. I think there is one more slide. So some of the, I wanted to go into a little bit more about those maintenance techniques. We want to implement a combination maintenance techniques on, well, it depends on the, on the technique you use, but eight to ten percent, eight to twelve percent of lane miles a year. The yearly cost estimated would, would be one point nine to do that. We'd be crack sealing and base repairing. We recommend a crack seal every three to five years after surface treatment is done, to extend the life of that street. Mill and overlay, we estimate, it's your most expensive option. We estimate two bucks a square yard, and that lifespan is approximately twelve years. Depends on the traffic and weathering and lots of things, but just generally twelve years. Ultra thin bonded asphalt surface, that's the UBS technique I was, I've been talking about that's growing. It's, it's more like twelve, or excuse me, ten bucks a square yard, so it's cheaper than the mill and overlay. It looks a lot like a mill and overlay. If you're, if you're driving along it, the average person wouldn't know the difference between a UBS and a mill and overlay. You stand over top of it, it looks a little bit more open graded. It performs almost as, as well, if not better than a mill and overlay. It seals up the cracks better than a mill and overlay does. Its lifespan is approximately ten years. And it does require crack seal every four years, just, just like most of your surface treatments. Also, we recommend implementing a biannual neighborhood street reconstruction program. So if you're targeting your, your good streets, the ones that are in fair, poor, you know, the stuff at the, at the upper limit or mid to upper limit, that, that would be the target for your annual maintenance plan. And then we, we recommend a biannual neighborhood street reconstruction program for those streets that are in very poor and worse condition. And that's to reconstruct them and bring them back to, to good condition. An estimated cost for that include, is, including everything, soft cost is two million per mile. That's in there again, to bring Stan back, Stantec back in three to five years. And then lastly, pursue all avenues for additional funding, including geo bonds, grants. And that's something that we can help you with, if you're looking forward. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? So obviously something we've never done here at the city of Carney, as far as have every inch of our roads graded with technology. Not that what we've done in the past has been wrong, gone how we've selected what roads we're going to really identify as, as key by any means. Our staff's always done a good job with the resources they have. But I am excited to, for Donnie and his crew and, and our city administrator to, to dig into this and bring forward some ideas for the board on. Currently, we're hitting about a fourth of the budget that this report recommends. We know it's something we need to do better on, so thank you for your time and presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item is mayor's communications. The only item I have this evening, I just want to remind everybody, there is going to be a public meeting here tomorrow at City Hall. The Carney Hole and Can meeting will be here. I know they were here last meeting or the meeting before and provided a great presentation. But it is a meeting open to the public. It'll be here from four to five fifteen downstairs here at City Hall. So great meeting, organization does a lot of wonderful things in the community and has for many years. So if you are a parent or not a parent, just somebody that wants to look at an opportunity to get involved in a wonderful organization to help protect the, the kids in our community, I would encourage you to stop by. Now, that concludes my mayor's communications. We'll move on to the city administrator's report.
The next regular board meeting will be Monday, March eighteenth at six thirty PM, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, we'll go on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Holt?
I don't have anything this evening.
Alderman Lehman?
I don't think I've got anything.
Alderman Barker?
I have nothing.
All right, we do have an executive session notice this evening, a closed session per RSMO six ten oh two one, subsection one, legal actions, causes of actions or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys in six ten oh two one subsection thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment. And just a reminder, our meeting will be adjourned from there. So this does conclude our public portion, our public setting of the meeting. If we can consider going into executive session, a motion to go into executive session, rather.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second.
A roll call, the board vote, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and that concludes our public meeting. Thank you guys for being here this evening.